Hello and welcome to the 4th District Town Hall Meeting. We would like to thank everyone for taking time out of your busy schedule to be here today. We hope you had the opportunity to meet the team of departments working here for you. There are so many projects happening throughout the city and we hope that you had that opportunity. Just to give you a brief overview of today's meeting, we will begin with an informative presentation from all the department heads and it will be followed by a question and answer segment. Please keep in mind that your questions will be limited to three minutes due to the amount of people here today, but should you need further information after your question has been addressed, we will take your name and number and get back to you in a timely fashion. So without further ado, I would like to introduce you to the Mayor of this great city, the Honorable Mayor Anthony Kopen.
Thank you very much, Mr. Tanya. Let me start off by acknowledging some of the elected officials that are here. If they would please stand. I see we've got 3rd District Councilman Robert Battle, 6th District Councilwoman Gilda Orange, 4th District Councilwoman Christine Vasquez. Okay. Let me simply start off by saying there's no "I" in "team." I said that at our last meeting. You can see here from my left to my right, our department heads and they will be introducing themselves. We are an administration that has went through a lot of turbulent times. When we started, this city was $15 million in debt. We were $13 million on reliance of gaming to shore up our general fund. And today, when I say we're a truly blessed city, now we're dealing with a balanced budget and that's reflected in all of the projects that you see around you. We now have the monies to start funding and putting it back into infrastructure, back into educational programming for our department heads, for all of our workers. But it wasn't easy. It came at the cost of making tough decisions and we have made those and we have weathered the storm. But again, there's no "I," there's no "I" in the word "team." And we have numerous projects going on. The total amount of projects I would say for this year, if we stay on course, would be $38 million. So when I say we're truly blessed to go from a negative to a positive situation, again, it takes holding the course. We're gonna take the microphone and start with Franny down on the end. Would you please stand up and let them know who you are? We also have two department heads who are not here. Carla Morgan, she's the City Attorney, and who else is missing? They told me one more person. Who? Weena Guzman, who is the Building Department.
Good evening. My name is Fran Nawacki and I am the Park and Recreation Manager.
Hi, good evening. My name is Greg Crowley. I'm Director of Utilities.
Hi, my name is Monty Korsby with Public Works.
Hi, my name is Brian Marsiniak. I'm from the East Chicago Water Department.
Hi, my name is Sandra Favella for Human Resources.
Good evening. My name is Terry Martin. I'm the Director of the Department of Public and Environmental Health.
Hello, everybody. My name is Francisco Rosado Jr. I'm the Director of Bus Transit.
Good afternoon. My name is Valeriano Gomez, Chief of Staff and City Controller.
Hello, my name is Connie McGann. I'm the Director of the East Chicago Human Rights Commission.
Ruben Ramos, Director of the East Chicago Marina.
Good evening, Kevin Klosak, IT System Administrator.
Good evening, Maria Becerra, Executive Director of the Redevelopment Department.
Good evening. My name is Jesse Rodriguez, City Engineer.
Good evening. My name's Emiliano Perez and I am the Fire Chief.
Good evening. My name is John Burris. I'm the Deputy Chief of Police.
Good evening. My name is Marino Solario, Project Manager of the Park Improvements.
Why don't you come up front here, please? Again, you can see the foundation. We have built a strong foundation. Y'all are beautiful people. They work from can't see in the morning to can't see at night. The one thing I can tell you, I have driven them hard. There's a lot of things to improve in this city, but we did not get that way overnight and we will not fix it overnight. But the one thing you will see is that we have held a true and tried course and that is one of fiscal responsibility and transparency. So I'm gonna start with the first department head who will get up and talk and that is Public Works Director, Mrs. Monty Korsby.
Good afternoon. As I mentioned, my name is Monty Korsby and I represent Public Works. Public Works provides the most city services to our residents and it's our goal to provide those services best way we can and we can't do that without your help. There's two things that I just wanted to go over with is we're in the process of changing over our current recycling program. We currently use recycle bins and we're gonna change over to a toter, which is like your garbage can. And what we're going to do, it's gonna be an easy process. We implemented this first within our front-end areas to see if it worked and it did in fact work. It helps us to manage the recyclables that are being placed out there and kind of eliminate them from blowing all over the place. We anticipate doing this within the entire city, starting in the fall. They're on order right now, so as they come in is when we're gonna start introducing it over to the residents. If you currently recycle, what's gonna be an easy process. When your recycle bin is placed outside, we have a crew that goes around and we jot down your address. So that way, on the next time you've got your recycling, what we're going to do is we're gonna remove your current bin and we're gonna replace it with the new bin. It's a garbage can style. It's gonna be the same as your garbage can now, but it's different in color. It's tan and it's got a green lid and it's identified and it has a recycling emblem on it. When you have this can, you're gonna start placing them in the alley. We no longer are gonna do it curbside. So this hopefully is gonna be a little bit more easy to put back and forth. And again, you can use higher volume. Some people will call in because one bin isn't enough, so you're asking for another bin and another bin and sometimes there's up to some residents that have five bins. So we're hoping that this works out a lot better for you. Again, if you have a problem with that and it's just not working, there's other ways that we can work it out. One of the things is in the program that we have now, we found that some residents do not, they're in a wheelchair, so of course they cannot do that. We will accommodate you if that's the case where you're elderly and you cannot actually take your can out, roll it out on your day. We have encountered that. So these are just things that are happening. That's gonna be a change. The other thing I wanted to discuss was we did our annual district-by-district cleanup. Now, if for some reason, and we finished it up, it was completed last week, we went through every district. Now, there were some districts that didn't allow us to do or give our 100% because of the rain and the holidays. So if in fact there's something that you wanted to put out and you couldn't get out or there's something that you wanted us to address, I have no problem. You just give us a call and we'll take care of the problem to help you. I'm gonna be available after the meeting, so if anybody has any concerns to help improve your areas or what you're requesting or if there's any way that you feel, whether it's with recycling, with garbage, with graffiti, with street sweeping, with rubbish pickup, we, again, Public Works provides the largest volume of services to the residents and we wanna make sure that we provide the best services to you. So if you have any problems, if you have any concerns that will help us, I would really like to speak with you. And that's all I have. Thank you.
The next department head you will be hearing from is Marino Solario, Parks.
Good evening. I quickly wanted to touch base. When we first started this project for the park improvements, which are citywide, this is again a first phase out of a $9 million, five-year park investment project. This first phase is touching your park, Washington Park amongst others. And it will have, as if you haven't seen yet, there's a big pavilion being put up that will be able to be rented for family functions, two picnic shelters, 24 by 24. All will have picnic tables. You'll have new benches around that park, new grills, fitness equipment and the new playground equipment that was just implemented. And this is the first time since we've implemented the improvements of the playground equipment where, from when I first took on the responsibility, there's a lot of kids using that equipment and I've been getting a lot of positive feedback on the selection of, you know, the equipment itself, the surfacing, the amount of swings, even the handicap accessibility. So this is again a step up from what decades past wasn't done. And so we're hoping that with all the improvements that are being done throughout all the parks, and I'm gonna name off all the eight parks that are being done, it's Nunez, Koschisko, Roxanna, Callahan, Washington, Todd, Sunnyside and Riley Park. So if you have any questions in regards to what improvements are coming to your area, specifically Washington or in your district, I can answer that after the meeting. One last thing I wanted to discuss is that we will be providing different landscaping and signage, wayfinding signs so that because there's different amenities now that weren't provided before, so you don't get lost, we welcome you to go to the parks and enjoy the new equipment. It's definitely a big project. Right now, the project again started at $300,000. That was the initial budget. We're at $2.4 million of investments into the parks. So it's a great way to see your children use the parks. The goal was to get everyone to be able to use something at the parks, to be able to come to the park, make it family-oriented. So now the mom and dad or their brother and sister can work on the fitness equipment while they're seeing their brother and sister or their son and daughter play in the playground equipment. Again, you can also rent out shelters that you're gonna be able to rent out from the Park Department for your family gatherings. So if you have any other questions in terms of the park improvements, again, I'll be here at the end of the day and I look forward to your questions. Thank you.
And again, to add on, when it came to the amenities in the park, we had a group coming here called Hyatt and Palmer and they told me that the greatest bang for your buck you can get is when you put in things that improve the quality of life. And that's art. You're gonna see sculptural components. We have designed sculptural features that we will be putting in the park, interacting type of sculptural components that our children can look, touch and feel. Also, if you wanna look at the basketball courts are gonna get refurbished. I could just go on and on because I got it when they told me that you have to start from the cradle and work up when it, everybody has to be affected when it comes to quality of life issues. The next person you will be hearing from is Greg Crowley, Utilities Director.
Good afternoon. As the Director of Utilities, I'm tasked with the responsibility of helping ensure that the residents and the businesses in East Chicago have safe drinking water and that the services provided in terms of the wastewater operations really help to meet the health and safety requirements for the city. As you well know, this spring has been a little bit different in terms of the weather, the wet weather impact has been substantial and it probably, it's probably a bit of a carryover from the winter that we had, which was pretty harsh in terms of the cold temperatures and the extreme snow and ice that we experienced. In terms of the wet weather impact, the East Chicago Sanitary District has a number of measures in place to really help you as the residents address the different issues. As you're well aware, historically, we've had our challenges with regards to flooding, sewer overflow events and so we're actively engaged in measures to really address those issues and to help individuals directly and to address those issues more broadly across the city. I'll highlight a couple initiatives for you so you're aware of what we're working on. Specifically for individuals, what we've put in place is essentially a 50/50 reimbursement program. It's essentially a check valve program that's designed to help residents that have had unique and specific problems with flooding in their homes. If you've experienced that problem, you know it's not a fun issue to deal with when you're having to pump water out of your basement or some other lower area in your home and you wanna, you certainly don't wanna live through that experience ever again. And with this check valve program, in essence, what you're able to do is to put in a mechanism, a check valve that can prevent any type of sewer backflow from coming back into your home and ensuring that you won't experience that flooding event. We have information available through the Sanitary District where you can contact us to get more specific details. But in a nutshell, what you're able to do is essentially work with a local plumber that is licensed through the city that is able to install a check valve for you. And once the installation is complete and you're satisfied with the work, you're able to, in essence, receive a reimbursement for half of the expense of having that check valve installed. We've had a number of residents contact the district to participate in the program and they've been very pleased with the results and so we certainly encourage you to take advantage of this program if this is a concern for you. More broadly, what we're working on is an initiative that we've put in place through IDIM, the Indiana Department of Environmental Management, where the city has adopted its long-term control plan for combined sewer overflows. And so in essence, what we're doing, and it has a mandate through the state and also through the federal government, through the EPA, is initiating a program in which we are addressing combined sewer events. And so in essence, what happens, what that means is, the way our system is set up in the city, we have dedicated sanitary sewers, we have storm sewers and then we have combined sewers. What happens with a combined sewer is the sanitary waste is also combined with storm flows. And what can happen is those, when we get a major storm event, and we've had a number of those recently, they can overwhelm the sewer system. And that water has to go somewhere because if there's too much flow, we handle it as best as we can at the Sanitary District, but sometimes that water can be so overwhelming that it has to be discharged back into the environment, which is not an ideal situation. We wanna be able to process and handle all that waste flow and not discharge it into the environment. With this program that we have in place through IDIM, we are addressing that concern. It involves some modification to some of the equipment that we have at some of the pump stations and in addition, doing some modifications to some of the piping collection network that allows us to be able to carry more of that discharge to the wastewater collection plant and to our collection basin so we can properly treat and discharge the flow from that point. We're embarking on a construction program that has really just kicked off the contractors on site. They've begun their initial work at one of the pump stations and this work will continue through the end of this calendar year, our first phase, and our second phase is expected to continue into next year. Again, my name is Greg Crowley, Director of Utilities. Be happy to meet with you and speak with you at the end of this event if you have any questions, again, more specific to the check valve program or in general about the long-term control plan. I look forward to meeting you. Thank you.
This simple device right here, when installed, we've seen the total cost of it be as low as $900 and the highest it has come in is $1,500. We do not go out and tell you you have to use a certain plumber. This way you can go and get multiple quotes. This way you can talk to the person, see who you feel comfortable with. In the state of Indiana, plumbers are the only ones, when you look at the craft, that have to be licensed. Why? Because they work with the water and they work with the sewer. And if the sewer gets in the water supply, you can literally make a whole city sick. So you can believe when this is installed, we're gonna make sure it's installed by a licensed plumber. But simply, the sewage coming out of your house will be able to flow in one direction. When we get the overflow, it comes, it does not let it go backwards. And this simple device would just save you, just, your headaches will go away. That's all I can tell you. We literally just finished putting one in. If Joe Wright was here, we just put one in for one of our seniors and she called praising because she said she used to be afraid to leave her house when rain used to come because she had an old-fashioned valve that she had to shut. And literally, if she thought it was gonna rain, she didn't even want to leave out her house. And now with the installation of this valve, she has found freedom. So we were able to, again, when you balance a budget, you can find and deal with the quality of life issue. This is a quality of life issue. We were able to put $300,000 off to the side to fund this program and this is why we can tell you a 50/50 match will be there.
So the Mayor pointed out another area in which we're working with the residents in the city and it's an important one to highlight as well because it has impact as well in terms of some of the flooding concerns. So in addition to the Sanitary District, there's another department, the Stormwater Department, that works specifically to address stormwater issues. And one of the things that we really tasked for that team this year was to target downspouts because those are also a key contributor to some of the concerns that we have in terms of overwhelming the sewer system, especially when we have combined sewers. And so what they've done is really since the spring, they've done, they've taken a grassroots effort, going door-to-door to residents' homes, residential homes, to speak with homeowners, to educate them on what the impact is of a connected downspout. So in essence, what that means is if you have a downspout that brings the water off your roof when you have a storm event and if they're, if they're not sending that water onto the ground, then you're basically allowing that water to come directly into the sanitary sewer system. And so when you think about it, you may think that's not substantial, but think about how large your roof is and think about the area that represents. And then when you think about a storm event and you think about some of the recent rainfall we've had, where we see multiple inches of rain, that adds up pretty quickly to be thousands of gallons of water and that's what can help contribute to some of the flooding concerns that we see. And so if you can take the initiative to look at your home, to see if your downspouts are connected, then the first step is to remove them. And certainly if you need help with that process, contact the Sanitary District. I mean, that's what we're here for. We're here to help you and we can help provide the guidance that you need to help you cap off that access to that sanitary sewer so you're not sending that water unnecessarily to the system and creating a problem. And it's the same thing. Share this concern with your family, your friends, neighbors. It may not, it may be a situation where your home is not an issue, but maybe you know someone in your neighborhood or someone else in the city that could be contributing to this issue. And so collectively, we can address these concerns.
Next is from IT, Kevin Klosak.
Good evening. My name, once again, is Kevin Klosak. I'm the System Administrator for the... There we go. For the City of Chicago. And tonight I just wanted to briefly talk to you about a website that the city put together and it's centered around opportunity. The opportunity of gaining work within the trades. The city at one time, the council had adopted an ordinance that states any projects that exceed $100,000, there had to be a certain percentage of local employment hired from the city. And through time, that was not really enforced. And so with all the construction and all the projects that are going on currently in the city, the administration thought it would be a good idea to put something together to help the residents that work in the trades have an opportunity to put their name out there. And at the same time, the contractors that are awarded projects are required to register to this same site to be able to go out and search for resumes of certain trades that may be available throughout the city. And so we have here up front is the city website and it's a simple process of, on the right side, you'll see a Workforce Employment Connection link. So if you were to click on that link, it takes you to the Workforce Employment Connection website. And it has a little explanation for both contractors and residents as to what the site is all about. In the case of a resident wanting to post their resume for a trade, you just go to the link for workforce applicants, it's Get Started on the bottom left there. And that will bring up and have a little disclaimer there that you would read through and then you'd go to Resident Registration and you would fill in the mandatory information, basically username, email address, password, how you would want your name to display when you're logged in. And once you go through the process, you would just hit Register. That will automatically register you for that site. So whenever you were to come back, you would be able just to go to the login, put in your username and password and be able to get online. Connie's gonna go ahead and log in now with an account to kind of show you how, once you do log in... This gives you the ability to now go ahead and post your resume. So when you do that, you go up on the side to Residents and your work profile is just your profile. You'd hit Add Resume. You'd be able to upload, be it a Word document, a PDF file, any type of file that you would have your resume electronically stored and fill in the little bit of information that's in there about yourself. And at that time, it would send a notice to our Human Rights Department to, they would review the application, if you will, or the resume strictly to be sure that we're not posting anything out there that does not belong out there. Once that resume is approved, you would get an email that says that your resume has been posted. And at that time, you would be able to go in and see what you have posted on your own account. The contractors, on the other hand, would be able to go into the various resume categories there and see what's available out there. I believe to date, Connie said there were approximately 70 resumes that have been posted. There are nine active contractors, I believe, 15, I'm sorry, 15 active contractors. And a question had come up in the past to see, well, how do we know that the contractors are doing their due diligence to go out and look? And there are logs within the website that we're able to audit at any time and see what contractors have logged in, which resumes they have researched and to make sure that, you know, that they're doing, performing their responsibility of going in and looking for East Chicago residents that are looking for work. As I mentioned, you know, this is, it's not a, there's no sort of hiring guarantees or anything, but we are trying to hold these contractors responsible to adhere to the ordinance that does say that they are responsible for hiring so many East Chicago residents. If we go back to the East Chicago homepage real quick, if you go back to eastchicago.com, there's another link to another website. If you know of anybody who is looking to get into the trades, they may not be actively in the trades at this time, there's a link to the Indiana Plan on the right side and that's a plan that has been very cooperative in working with the city and vice versa in getting people interested in going to work with the trades. We had some employment, or some employees with the city that started out as part-time laborers with the city. that started out as part-time laborers with the city. They went over to the Indiana Plan and I believe through that plan, they're well on their way to, uh, now, uh, leaving the city and going to, to start working in the trades. So this is a great website also to, if, uh, you know of anybody that has that endeavor to go and work in the trades and they're just not a tradesman yet, to go there and the Indiana Plan will definitely, uh, do well to get them on their way. One last thing, uh, this website is for, as I mentioned, um, opportunity to, uh, post resumes for, uh, for the trades. It's not, uh, it's not a website for, um, job opportunity for city, um, employment. However, the city does post on the homepage of the city website, they do put when there are openings, uh, available through the city. And, um, you're more than welcome to email through there or drop off personally, um, your resumes or applications to our human resources department. And, uh, they will definitely, um, keep those on file for any future, uh, employment opportunities. And if anyone has questions afterwards, I'd be glad to sit and talk with you and answer any of your questions. Thank you.
When I was elected, um, councilman, um, they say it's a poor author who don't read his book. Um, I sponsored that ordinance that says any, any projects over a hundred thousand, that fifty percent of that workforce should be from East Chicago. But it's one thing to put the ordinance up there, but then how do we get our people ready? Um, what we have done, we have taken a temporary workforce, part timers. A lot of times you hear them say, well, they can't pass a drug test or, or they don't have any work history. We've been able to mesh our, our part-time workforce. Let them go and apply in the Indiana Plan. We just had eight go through it. I, I'm proud to say we're getting ready to produce, uh, our first electrician apprentice. Um, we've seen the numbers go from zero, literally zero, uh, percent compliance to now we're hovering around twenty-three percent compliance that the contractors are going up there because they know we're watching. Um, here on Main Street where they're working at, uh, Grimmer Construction, they were only required, I think it was two. They end up getting four East Chicagoans to work on the project. So we know it is working. Will we have a magic wand and erase all of the ills? No, but we're striving. We're striving to do the right thing. And that's the thing that humbles me each and every day. I know what each and every one of their hearts is and their heart bleed each, East Chicago. Some people will tell you that, uh, they can take this Herculean task and reduce it down to nothing. It's just not true. You have to stay on a tried and true course. Let me introduce, the next person coming up, uh, would be the city engineer, Jezereal Rodriguez. Jesse?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, good evening. Um, my name is Jesse Rodriguez, city engineer. Um, this past year and coming year has been exciting and productive time for, uh, city infrastructure project. Uh, we are currently working on seventh project and another seven upcoming project to make the city safer, cleaner, more efficient and better place to live. Uh, all these projects are scattered throughout the city. So this evening, I'm just gonna focus on the project that's gonna have, uh, an impact on this district. Uh, on my left side, I encourage all you guys after the meeting, you can go and take it to all the projects and, um, I'll be more happy to answer questions. Um, the first project that I want to talk to you, uh, gonna have an impact on this, um, district is Roundabout. Uh, a couple of weeks ago, uh, we had a public meeting. Uh, we went through, uh, to this project, explained, uh, to the residents the concept of the project. Last week, we awarded the project and, and yesterday, we issued another to proceed to this project. So, uh, we're expecting construction, um, mid-July of this year with a total investment of one point three million dollars. Um, another project that is gonna start, uh, mid-July is, uh, Lakefront Development Phase One. Um, the same thing, we, we awarded the project last week. We issued, we issued another to proceed yesterday. Uh, total investment, three point three million dollars. Uh, this project, uh, will include a new splash pad, uh, lighting, uh, picnic shelter, uh, landscaping. We also gonna repave, uh, Aldis Avenue, um, including ADA Corps grant. We're gonna, uh, remove and replace some curb and sidewalk, um, and it's gonna start mid-July. The third project that I have the impact is a resurfacing at various locations, uh, throughout the city. Uh, total investment, seven hundred thousand dollars. Uh, on the map, you can see, uh, the locations. There are some alleys that also we're gonna repave. We didn't include those locations, but we, we, we also gonna repave some alleys, uh, throughout the city. Uh, the fourth project that is gonna have a big impact is the central services parking, uh, lot improvement. Total investment, eight hundred thousand dollars. We gonna mill on resurfaced the parking lot also, uh, including, uh, Klein Avenue Service Road. Uh, we gonna include, uh, storm sewer cash basing. We gonna replace some sidewalks and, and curb, concrete curbs. Uh, we gonna put some pipes, we gonna improve the drainage, um, on that parking lot. And the project number five is the Main Street, um, project. It's approximately ten percent complete, uh, total investment, four point three million dollars. Um, we just had a meeting with the businesses and residents last week. We gonna have another meeting, uh, next week. So make sure that, um, the people, uh, to listen to the people, make sure that we're, we're doing, uh, we're doing the best that we can to, to move forward. We have a couple of issues, but, uh, we addressed those issues already. And, uh, project ten percent, uh, complete. Um, two blocks will be done this year and other two blocks will be done next year. So once again, we're doing a lot of projects. So if you have any question, uh, I'll be available after the meeting for the Q and A session and also, uh, uh, once we're done with the meeting, I'll be here and, uh, try to answer all the questions. Um, thank you for your attention.
Uh, one of the projects that the city engineer mentioned was the Roundabout. Um, we will be putting in three roundabouts in the city, uh, within the next two years. Indot, the Indiana Department of Transportation, say this is the future way that highways will be designed. It is so futuristic that Vaparazzo has literally eight of them. Um, it allows us to remove traffic signals. You have no, um, uh, let me see, just no traffic lights. It allows you to go in a continual circle, pick the time that you wanna exit out. And, uh, it reduces the speed that you go into there. So, um, fatalities are reduced by ninety-something, uh, percent. Uh, the type of impact that you have, since the speeds will be anywhere from five to fifteen miles an hour, it slows the traffic down. Um, these have been very successful. When you go further down in Southern Indiana, you see them putting, uh, putting these up. Um, Indot is pushing the projects and, um, helping us with matching dollars to get these projects done. We'll have the Roundabout at Columbus Drive. We'll have another one at Riley and Dicky. And then we will have one over the Aldis Street Bridge. We're talking about that one now. When you go over to the casino, the bridge, you go over it there, that's the Aldis Street Bridge. That's a two million dollar project that we getting ready to do over. It ties into our Lakefront Development, which will be three million. All of these projects is, you know, have you ever seen when they go to build the shopping center, they put a sign up there, "Coming soon"? And some people look in that parking lot, they see the picture and they see the empty lot and they can't put, another person go past and they start seeing the tracks is moved and they look at the picture and they still don't get it. Another, see the framing members go up, they look at the picture, he still won't get it. Some people won't get it till they actually take the key open the door and they say, "Come on, we have a new ribbon cutting." But these are exciting times in the city of East Chicago. There was a time annually, we get twenty million dollars from the boat. Five million of that is committed. It's committed, three point five million of that goes to the RDA. And we've been paying into that for ten years. Then another portion goes to pay for this public safety building. You see where in? So out of that twenty million, we roughly go through about six million of that with these bond issuance. But then after that, we were using almost all of the remaining. Fourteen million dollars, thirteen million of it, we was paying salaries and trying to shore up the budget. Now, since the budget is balanced, we now have gaming that's freed up. Because we're not living in a negative world, we're living in a positive world. And this is what you're seeing. This is what a balanced budget give you. When you came into that parking lot, you see them police cars lined up there? That's what a balanced budget give you. In a year span, we have just hired, let me see, ninety, seventeen new police officers. That's what a balanced budget gives you. I could just go on and on, but let me end up for homeownership, Maria Becerra. Would you please come up redevelopment director?
Good evening, everyone. Again, my name is Maria Becerra and I'm the director of the, of the Department of Redevelopment for the city of East Chicago. And we're very fortunate to be an entitlement community. So every year, the federal government sends, uh, or awards, uh, over a million dollars for the community in the city of East Chicago. And, uh, with all the regulations, there's certain things that we can and can't do with the federal dollars, but we, uh, have a lot of exciting things that are happening within the city. We do wanna highlight two programs that we have. One of them is not federally funded. It is actually through the city council and the mayor and the vision for homeownership. So those funds come from the city. So we're gonna highlight our rehab program that is federally funded. Um, we have been, uh, finishing up some old projects, but we're, we're glad to announce that over a half a million dollars is being dedicated for our rehab program. And, uh, without, uh, taking too much of the, the thunder from our team member here, we have Al Esponozza that will explain to you our rehab program. And again, uh, we are, um, gonna have more than a half a million dollars that we will be, um, dedicating strictly for the rehab program. So, uh, Mr. Al Esponozza.
Thank you, Maria. Uh, Al Esponozza, Department of Redevelopment. I had run the owner occupied rehab program for the city. Uh, not enough people know about this program because we are always looking for people to submit applications to us. And there, every time they come in, they say, "We didn't know about this, but we're, we're here now to tell you about it." The, the residential rehab program helps homeowners fix their houses, whether they're code violations, health issues or safety issues. It does use federally funded monies. So there are, you know, things that we have to do with federal rules to get you there. Uh, we have a couple of different programs. There's the regular rehab where we can help you with interior and exterior, uh, repairs. The, in, the exterior renovation program, which is specifically just for exterior repairs. Emergency assistance, uh, that would be, uh, basically given as a loan to, and a homeowner that needs quick assistance. And a ramp, uh, the handicap ramp program for homeowners that are in need of those types of structures. Um, the rehab program is a citywide program. So no matter where you live in the city, we can help you. Uh, we've been working, our, our redevelopment department has been working to increase our team so that we can reach out and help more people. And our capacity has grown and we're now looking to help more and more people. Uh, we do focus on our exterior renovation program. That's a, a, a focused program for the greater harbor area, uh, which has been designated as an NRSA through our HUD funds. NRSA means a Neighborhood Rebootization Strategy Area. So that's what we're focusing on as far as the exterior renovation program. Uh, we recently did a, a project on, in Sunnyside, if, if you're familiar with that area, on Deal Street. And if you get a chance to go by there, it, it came out really nice. Uh, we're also now going to be starting a few other projects in the Sunnyside neighborhood and throughout the harbor. Uh, we recently, uh, fixed a, a house at, in Ivy Street. Uh, we're getting ready to, uh, transfer that ownership over through a couple of different processes and pretty soon there'll be a homeowner, a new, new family living in that house. And, and a couple of streets down on Ivy also. We're, we're now in the process of building or rehabbing a, an existing home, which soon to be probably throughout the summer, will now have another family living in there. And that's kind of it, but we want you to get the word out uh, that we do have a residential rehab program for citizens of East Chicago. And if you have any other questions that, I will be here after the meeting. Uh, be free to contact me or call the office at three nine one, eight five one three. Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Nicholas Smith and I am the compliance administrator for the East Chicago Department of Redevelopment. Right now, the department has a homeownership incentive program where we're offering incentives to individuals that would like to purchase single-family homes in the city of East Chicago. Uh, right now, if you purchase any existing home in the city of East Chicago, you can actually receive ten thousand dollars in down payment assistance toward the purchase of that property. And if you purchase a brand new home in the city of East Chicago, uh, you can receive up to twenty-five thousand in down payment assistance. City employees are actually eligible for five thousand more on each side. So for the existing homes, city employees can receive fifteen thousand in down payment assistance. And for the new homes, city employees can receive thirty thousand in down payment assistance. With that assistance, what we ask the individuals to do is just occupy that home for a certain amount of time. So for the existing homes, we ask you to occupy the homes for five years. For the new homes, we ask that you occupy the home for ten years. As long as you occupy the home for those periods of time, then it's pretty much like you never received the funds. It, it's completely forgiven. And, uh, we, the intent of the program is to create homeownership opportunities for, for individuals throughout the city. The two main requirements for the program, one is you do have to attend an eight-hour home buyers workshop. We do that workshop pretty much monthly. And that workshop is geared to equip individuals to obtain the knowledge and the information that they need to make a wise purchasing decision. Uh, we do that again, it's on Saturdays and it, it goes from nine o'clock to five o'clock PM. And you can feel free to call our office and, uh, ask for myself, Nicholas Smith, and I can get you registered for the class. Uh, but secondly, the kind of main and important requirement for the down payment assistance is that if you're using a lender, then you must be pre-approved in order to come apply for the assistance. We wanna make sure that you're mortgagable. I tell people, if you can get a mortgage, the city of East Chicago is here to help you in purchasing that home. There are no income restrictions to our down payment incentives. Uh, there's no first time home buyer requirement to our down payment incentives. It is really meant to do just what the program says, incentivize homeownership in the city of East Chicago. June is actually National Homeownership Month. So this Sunday, from two o'clock to five o'clock PM, we'll actually be showcasing some of the new homes that the city has built. One is at thirty-eight thirty-two Carey Street. And two of them are in the Washington Square subdivision, sixteen thirty-nine Center Drive and seventeen thirty-one Center Drive. So we encourage all the residents to come and see, uh, how serious the city of East Chicago is about homeownership. Uh, again, I, I'd be happy to answer any homeownership related questions that you all have and I'll be here after the event. Thank you.
Again, um, that was something I was immediately, uh, faced with when I became mayor, that, um, the reality of, um, the tax crisis, uh, that we had, that many people who historically owned homes, lost their homes. And we had an influx of people coming in, buying up that stock and turning it into rental. And then the city of East Chicago went upside down. They say a healthy community roughly have a seventy-five, twenty-five percentage. Meaning seventy-five percent of it should be homeowners, twenty-five percent of it, of your housing stock should be rental. But the city of East Chicago turned upside down and we were at sixty percent of our housing stock being rented and, um, forty percent of it being single-family, uh, homes. This is why we have become very aggressive at taking the gaming dollars. Went before the council, partnering with the council, the council also seeing that wisdom. This is why to date, we have committed a half a million dollars of the gaming dollars toward housing. When before, we used to have to shore up the general fund with it. toward housing, when before, we used to have to shore up the general fund with it. Now, we have the money to do what? To invest in the quality of life issues. We are in the spirit of the resurrection of this city, what will make us invest in the residents themselves. And the quickest way you can empower someone is when you introduce them to first-time homeownership. The next person you will be listening to, Chief Mark Becker, could not be here, will be District Chief Verbis, Public Safety.
Good evening. My name is John Verbis. I'm the deputy chief here at the East Chicago Police Department. Chief Becker had a family commitment, and he couldn't be here tonight, and he asked me to fill in for him. At this time, we have some new officers back here for the, just hired eight new officers for the police department, part of the seventeen that were hired recently, and I'm going to ask them to come up here so I can introduce them to you, so you could see our new officers. The first one here is Gregory Alexander Daye, Philip Joseph Fabian, Gerard G. Garza Jr., Justin Michael Juarez, Charles Hicks, Erica Ann Kelly, Jordan Terry Mora, and Damian Toronto. With the addition of these eight officers, it brings us up to a total of ninety-eight officers. These officers are soon, they're going through their orientation period right now, and next few weeks, they'll be attending the Indiana Law Enforcement Academy in northwest Indiana and Hobart, Indiana, to complete their training. You guys could go ahead and sit down. The other nine officers that we hired, there's one that has completed her training, and she's assigned to the, one of the shifts already in uniform. The other eight are going through their field training and should be available here in about two months, I believe. So with the hire of these seventeen people, this increases our police department over twenty percent. This will give us more flexibility in the future here to address certain things that we've been a little bit shorthanded on. Let me tell you who I am first. I was born here, I was raised here, I'm sixty-one years old, I got twenty-six years in on this police department. I believe in this city. I live here. I'm not moving when I retire. I'm going to stay here. I know who my doctors are, I like the hospital that I'm going to. And I went to high school here. I graduated, some of you might not like to hear this, but I went to Roosevelt High School. We won the state championship. I graduated in nineteen seventy. I'd just like to take the time. There's some stats up there that says crime's down, public safety's up, crime's down, and it gives you some stats. I'm not going to dwell on those stats, because if you live here and you're a victim of crime, or you live in a neighborhood that's troubled right now, those stats don't mean a hill of beans to you. All you want to know is what we're going to do to change and fix that problem that you're having. With the addition of these seventeen officers, we could virtually saturate that neighborhood, and that's what has to happen in some of these neighborhoods that are going on right now. We have, one of the things that we're using right now to combat some of the troubles that we're finding is the stop team. We have the East Chicago Stop Team in the back of the room. We also have members of the Regional Stop Team in the back of the room. There's officers from Munster and Hammond here right now. They're here on a, some of them are here on a full-time basis, some are on a part-time basis, and we find troubled spots in the city, and we assign them to those spots. And we, in return, go to their cities and try to help them with their troubled spots. But I understand the problems in some of these neighborhoods. One of the ones that a lady just mentioned before the presentation was on Alcoa. Well, I grew up on Alcoa. I know what the thing is, what's going on over there. And a lot of these neighborhoods are changing. It's just something we're going to have to do the best. We're ninety-eight policemen. There's thirty thousand people live in this city. The only reason we're the police is because you let us be the police. If you didn't want us to be the police, we wouldn't have police. What we have to do is, us as police have to be part of the community, and you, the community, have to be part of us. The only way we're going to fix this problem is by working together, talking, exchanging ideas, and seeing what works. If it doesn't work, we'll change it. We'll try to address the problem so it suits a solution that works for both of us. And that's the only thing I can say, moving forward, the doors are open here. Chief Becker is very good at meeting people. I'm here, Commander Taylor, Commander Maldonado, we'll sit down and we'll address your problem. We'll try to tailor a solution exclusively for your neighborhood. And with that, I'm going to say, I'll be here to answer any questions you guys have.
Again, at this time, we're going to move on to the question answering portion of this. Can I tell you that I can magically make one hundred percent of these problems go away with the wave of my hand? No. But look at all of the tools that we're putting in place to deal with it. But we are nothing without the community input. We now have days with the children. We have a day with, where we do community walks. We have a day with the teachers, we bring in teachers. Day with the pastors, where we bring in the pastors from all over. In this very building, we meet with them and we ask them, "Tell us what you see. Tell us or help us fix this." It's going to take each and every one of us to set that bar on how safe we want to be. When you see something and it don't look right, don't hesitate to call the police. We now work in an atmosphere of anonymity where your name is not going to get out. You don't even have to leave your name on some of these numbers. We have where the chief gives directly his cell phone number, and you can call and tell him your problem. You don't even have to just say the problem, say, "Where is that?", and you don't even have to say your name. When you call communications now, there's no way they're going to breach out and say your name to anyone. People used to fear that, say, "Well, they're going to say my name." Well, that isn't true now. And all I'm asking each and every one of you to help us make this a better place. I will close with this and say from the bottom of heart, I mean everything I say, when you see the words up there, when they say East Chicago, Indiana, it says "A city of hope and progress." And that will take time, and if you reward me with your patience, you will see the city get better and better and better. So I'm going to turn this over to Val Gamas. He's going to walk around, any questions that you have, stand up, or he'll bring the mic directly to you in a comfort of your seat, and then we'll field a question to the department head, who should be able to answer it to the best of their ability. If we cannot find that answer today, we will get back with you promptly, especially, we need you to leave the information, and then we will get back to you with that question.
Okay, good evening. Now, if anybody has a question, we're going to try limited to three minutes. We have quite a number of people here, so if anybody wants to start.
Hello. My name... Please give your name and where you live, so the department head can at least focus in on where you're at and respectfully address your name.
My name is Henry Franklin, I'm a precinct resident of DC twenty-eight. Brand new precinct, a brand new community. It's a pleasure to work for East Chicago again, because I retired from East Chicago for twenty-eight years of service, and that was a good service in them twenty-eight years. I come today about the, over in, across the tracks over there in East Chicago, and my precinct, I would appreciate it if they come and look, and I see them working and putting them sewages down and everything over there for the stop the flooding. We sitting over there on a swamp land, and we need for the, get that sewer system going over there, you know? Everybody over there got a sucker pump just about. You need to come over there and take a look and see if we figure out something for the get, you know, the sewer going over there. Have one of them brand new. I would appreciate that, thank you.
Next, anybody else? Is there anyone who can answer that question?
It sounds like you have more of a request than a question, so I don't know if you have a question around that, but if you would like to meet with me afterwards, I could certainly collect information from you and can kind of point our resources in the right direction to make sure we're addressing concerns in your area.
Who's next?
Good evening. My name is Sherry Hunter. I live in West Canyon. I've been here about a year, I was there from Hammond, been in Hammond a long time, but I come home to help out my neighborhood, so I do that. I'm right now concerned with the West Canyon complex. You have a park list, you have every park on there to stop, but I don't see any remodeling of Goodman Park. I've been helping the boys to pick up basketballs out there for the last couple of years. There's six baskets on those courts, not a net on any of them, never has there. There's no bleachers, we have a baseball field with young kids to play softball, nothing. We have no lights out there in that park. It is a city park, and it should be treated as any other city park in the city of East Chicago. That's all I have.
Please respond to the question.
Reno again. Last year, if you can recall, there was a major improvement in Goodman Park, which was a trail that was installed, which is, from what I understand, highly it's used, they have new benches. We understand your concern and don't feel that you are forgotten, because you're not. All the parks in the nine, the five-year park plan will receive upgrades. We're just taking things phase at a time. This year, again, I've stated the parks that we will be addressing. Again, five years, it's the complete project, so Goodman Park is on that list to get those upgrades. But we have, the mayor actually, a week and a half ago, asked me to go take a look at that softball field that you're discussing, because it is in disrepair. So that is being addressed. And also, the basketball court citywide have an issue with the nets being torn down. And actually, just today, we discussed that we may implement a pilot program to see if we put chain nets to see what comes out of that, and if it works, then we will, citywide, provide that so that that stops becoming a problem, because we've done everything that we can, zippy-tied the nets, and they still come down, and that is a solution to that problem. In regards to benches and other amenities, again, those that came out of the other parks will be recycled to the smaller parts and those that aren't being anything that's getting done as of now. So just be patient, you have, you know, we're trying to get as much as we can done. Like I said, the track was installed, and it's a step to the right direction. It's not the solution to everything, but we're definitely going to address that in the upcoming years, and you'll be aware of what those upgrades are and at what time they'll be done. But all the parks will be improved. Thank you.
Okay, she had one more question. She still had a minute and fifty seconds.
Well, also, also, let me add to that. When this administration came in, you can remember, the first park we started working on, and Councilman Battle can attest to this, is Goodman. Goodman Pool was closed forever and ever and ever. It is now open. We reconditioned the bathhouse over there. So to say, give the positive, the bitter with the sweet. Councilman Battle asked for a walking trail there. We put the walking trail over there. There is new benches over there, and there are new benches over there that have the name Goodman Stenciled in them. Can the baseball field be better? Yes, it can. About a week and a half ago, when you had the block party in Canyon, Councilman Battle came and approached me and said, "Mayor, I ask you to find the funding to finish the project over there." I looked him in his eye with all sincerity and say, "We will find that." And after I had that conversation with him, I sent Mariano over there and said, "Find me the solution." And we're working on that as we speak. So, and remember, Goodman wasn't in the first phase of initiation, but when Councilman Battle brought the compassion to me and said, "Mayor, in ninety-degree, ninety-five, especially that one summer when we had all the blistering heat, they have nowhere to go." And that's when we was wrestling with a major budget deficit. I felt his pain, I felt his sincerity, and we dug, we scraped, and we found the money to begin the process of the resurrection of Goodman Park. So just give me a little patience, we're going to get there. But what we did do, we picked a major park in each district. And in the third district, the park we're working on over there is Riley Park. And the next week when you go over there, you're going to see pavilions being put up, you're going to see the basketball court refurbished, you're going to see new benches over there, you're going to see new playground equipment, go over there, two other additional shelters. So we are giving the third district its fair share of quality of life dollars. But you're right, with Goodman being situated, contained in the West Canyon complex, I can see where there's an intimate relationship with that park, with the people who reside there.
Yeah, one, two other things I wanted to mention. The basketball court, you're talking about you're checking into chains, okay? That work.
Well, you know, on the basketball, let me add to that. On the basketball, we change those religiously. But by them being cotton, they jump on the hang and they tear them off. We were losing them left and right. We end up, I came up with an idea of taking the twist ties and then have them put the twist ties all around, and if you look, you see those twist ties, you'll know we changed them. But you can look throughout the park. We put them up. This week, they'll be hanging down next week, and we just go, because they tear them down, we go to put them back up. And that's literally at every park, not just Goodman, you know? So this is why we're looking for a more durable source to put up there, and we're going to pilot that, and if that works, you're going to see these nets being incorporated throughout all the parks.
Okay, in the meantime, I'm going to use my resource to replace, to put nets up there. Is that okay to the city?
I would say no, because that's what, that's what the service we provide, and we have the nets. And you called in a complaint to the park department, and if no one answered, then you take it all the way to the top. But I can tell you, I stay on them religiously about replacing those nets. When I go into the mayor's office and when I come out every day, I don't got it on them, nets go up, you go red, pass veteran park now, you see them nets hanging right back down. So I know they're putting them up, but that's why we're looking for a more durable net that we can put up there, because this net is going to keep, the cotton ones, they're hanging because they know their fingers can tear them down. Not even saying they're trying to, but they're not durable enough. So if this pilot program worked, I think it'd be a beautiful thing.
Okay. Another thing, the swimming pool. I've raised enough money, plus my own, to put 30 kids in the swimming pool. Fran's wife working with me. She's gonna come and register them tomorrow. So I just want to let people know that I do what I can for Cagüent.
Thank you.
Stacy Winfield, precinct committee woman, East City, Sunny Side. I like those smaller parks, but as I look at Sunny Side, Sunny Side is a park that's full of all those children that come from different areas. I'm glad that they did leave the equipment, the ruined, ready equipment there because we have a lot of small children in the park. Yet, they removed those larger swings. And I ask that you really to replace those because we have 13, 14-year-old children that cannot intermingle. I wouldn't like to see them intermingling with five and six-year-olds. The mulch was deftly there in the grass. It's kind of out of this play. I would like to see that corrected so that our children won't be parents, go to the park every day, and they don't wanna sit and watch a 13-year-old with their three-year-old trying to swing and play in the park. That's nice. Also, we talk about history in Chicago. As was going on in Washington Park, and you talk about sculptures that you're gonna put in the park. I've talked to my children and different people don't really realize that Washington Park once had a zoo. And we have that elephant that was a sculpture in the zoo. And I would like to see that because they need to know the history. We have a platform that I don't see any longer that the children, even in the schools, when the teachers take them into the park, they get to let them know that East Chicago didn't have a zoo. So I would like to also see that.
Hello. In regards to your swing situation, we did go around all the parks when we, when I first took on the responsibility of that project. And we, we analyzed what, what needed to be done. I know I have spoken to you in regards to this. We did go through each park and said, "Okay, this is, I think, what is fair and, and for, for the, for the park." I actually retracted what I recommended because I saw that there was gonna be a, a more demand for swings. Originally, we were only gonna have two tot swings and two regular swings. That's it. And every new upgrade. Because of what you brought up and because of other people in that neighborhood, if you can recall, we went around that park and I asked, you know, what you thought was appropriate. I think we came to a consensus that six swings were appropriate for that area, four of which are regular swings, three regular swings, one ADA compliant. That's that little roller coaster looking one, and two tot swings. I understand your, your plea for the other equipment on the other side. As of right now, I mean, that's something we can look into. It is, however, in all the other parks, you know, it's, all the park districts everywhere are trying to compress their parks in terms of equipment for maintenance purposes, for having that co-mingling that you're discussing that you, you know, don't want. Again, it may not be appropriate for your neighborhood. We'll, we'll look into that. I have discussed that we did add more swings that were originally intended, that we actually bought. You know, I told the mayor, I said, "Hey, it looks like we're gonna need more swings." And we really did. I mean, if you go to the parks now, and I agree with what you're saying, you know, there's a lot of people using them now, more than I've seen before normally. Is it something that we can look into? Yes, we'll look into. Is it something that we can quickly resolve? Again, we'll see where it fits in on, in terms of the, this project in, in general. So that's all I can say about those swings. And in terms of the sculptures, part of this project, I told the mayor, I said, "We were given an opportunity. He was discussing sculptures, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera." And I said, "Hey, why not, through sculptures, through art, express the history of the city?" Because many people tend to forget what that history is. Some of, some, there's a lot of new people coming into the city that don't appreciate that. Or some look at it as a negative that we're an industrial city. The reality is that we're still an industrial city, still producing steel. You know, we have refineries in our backyard, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So why not take that and showcase it throughout the city? And I proposed to the mayor about an industrial park trail. And what that is, is that it's a trail that goes through all the parks in the city. And as you go through it, there will be a sculpture in each park that describes a certain timeline in the city's history. And so I'm glad that you brought up that elephant sculpture because that's something that we can definitely look into. I do know that it's a zoo. I actually have stacks and stacks of information in terms of history of the city that I can only read. I wasn't there. I didn't attest to it, but I definitely see that rich history. And I think what I discussed with the mayor, and he agrees, that we do need to showcase that history. And we're trying to get companies to sponsor these sculptures like Arso Middle, BP, et cetera, et cetera, so that it doesn't have to come out of the pockets of the city. We've worked a deal with Sims Metal Management in the city that's donating. They're literally gonna be cutting rail cars, rail train cars that you see coming by every, every day. They're gonna cut them for us so that we can manage those pieces and create the sculptures out of them. So it's a, it's a very good project. It's gonna take time again. That's all I can answer in terms of that request.
Okay, as a resident of 30 years of Sunny Side, I do speak for the residents of Sunny Side. That's why I asked about those swings. Yes, we did speak. And I have gotten concerns about it, so I do allow them to come forward. I come forward for them and speak on behalf of them. We would like to see those swings. We have seniors in Sunny Side. Sunny Side has a lot of seniors in their neighborhood. And they also look forward. I know that the Ziegels are coming. And I ask that the benches come for them because there are certain things that like to sit out in the park in certain areas, which we had discussed. We would like to see that in that neighborhood. So that they can come out, get in together, and enjoy themselves, even if it's with children out in the schools who, you know, they can be in the park along, enjoying the weather. But that seems that I would, seriously, I would like to consider that if possible.
And we are, we are, part of the long-term for Sunny Side. There's a trail that goes throughout the whole park because it's, one, it's lacking the sidewalk or anything that people can walk in. And then the trail in general will help, you know, bring people together in regards to that.
And also, Stacy, let me add that we didn't wanna think that we can put any and everything in the park. Just because it's new and shiny don't mean the people would embrace it. But this is why I reached out to you, precinct committee person, Tia Carley over there, and sixth district councilwoman, Gilda Orange, so we could get that filled. Because you're right, you were elected by the people. And I tell people that no one, you could be a councilman and literally not know the people that vote for you. But it's hard, the precinct people, they have an intimate relationship, a one-on-one relationship. And this is why, all the way down to the precinct committee person, to the councilperson, we're folding them in so that, we hope it don't get lost in translation when we go to put new things in the community that we're listening to the representatives. Next question?
Linda, so last thing before we go to ID. A couple of real quick questions. Number one, what are the plans with Block Stadium? Because I see it's not being used, utilized as much as it used to be. We used to have lots of schools coming in, chartering, some kinds of things going with it. And it doesn't seem to be getting utilized. Number two, I know every kid in East Side wants to be an NBA star, but I look at the tents courts. They are messed. Could you please fix them once? We do have kids that like to go to tents. And number three, I'm also an East Chicago teacher for 34 years. For the people that are here, there's a lot of changes going on this year, crazy changes. And I encourage you to call and use, please, send your kids and your grandkids to East Chicago schools. We do offer excellent education. We're losing a lot of kids in charter schools. And that said, have some faith in us and bring your kids back.
Again, part of the five-year park plan that was passed by the park board, it includes the repairs for Block Stadium. I think there's gonna be an assessment of what the, what the current condition is of that stadium. It's unfortunate that because so many baseball stadiums or baseball diamonds, whatever you wanna call them, you know, are meant to be baseball diamonds. And it's unfortunate that throughout the years, it's been, the area has been used for something other than baseball. And because of that, that's why the current conditions, and what some would consider it's in disrepair, it has, it is a concern that was brought up. It is part of the five-year plan to upgrade, whether that be refurbish it or, again, we would, we would have to analyze what the situation is. If you recall, sometimes there's a lot of flooding there also. So, you know, situations like that will be addressed as the years progress. Again, give us a chance. It's a five-year project. There will, it will get fixed. That's for sure. It's in the, and it's a public document, so if you wanna take a look at it, it's definitely there. And then your second question, which was in regards to tennis courts. As the person that's doing this project, I came to the mayor and taking the surveys that were created, that were, we did phone surveys last year to get a consensus of where people want things, et cetera, et cetera, what amenities do they want. There's a high calling for basketball courts. A lot of people use them. There's a deficit in general. We didn't find in the survey that a lot of people talked about tennis. However, it doesn't mean that it's not an important part of this project. The tennis courts, what we're gonna do is, most of the disrepair tennis courts that you're discussing, especially like Washington Park, for example, for Washington Park, three of the courts will, so two of the tennis courts will be replaced by basketball courts. And one tennis court will remain and it will be resurfaced and fixed so that there's still that availability. Because in that area, according to the, the survey, they still need a tennis court. The demographic calls for it and the, the people want, want it through that survey. So we're not saying that we're phasing out all tennis courts. That is not what's happening. What's happening is that we're appropriating our money in a smart way because the last thing we wanna do is create a tennis court and it not be, and not be used when we could have created a different court that we know for a fact that will get used. Now, there are tennis courts at Central High School. And again, there probably isn't a representative here for that other than, you know, your, your teacher. But we're trying to see if we can work something with them so that those can be open to the public also to, to use. Until we start getting a, a population and demographic that wants those amenities, we feel that we need to appropriate our dollars at where the, the most need is needed. But, but know that a tennis court will stay at Washington Park for people to use brand new. And so, if that answers your question.
Number three, I'm sorry, you mean, because I'm the one that has a tennis court. How about two, just at the point? I hope kids right now on the team that if they have the opportunity to learn, and have it as available, they would, not be caught.
Let, let me answer the question. You have a block stadium. In the rear by the door there, we have park board president, Lily Ramos. And she can attest to you at the last park board meeting that we passed for the repair of the Block Stadium main field. We had a specialty company called Sports Field. This is what they do when you see the, the ball fields in Munster being done. They do that. They used to have a maintenance contract with us, he said, about 10 years ago, to where they came and did the maintenance scene of our fields. That's what you're seeing. You're seeing a lack of maintenance. Then you're seeing where you have the cutting of the dollars. Just anyone, it's two things, two type of fields. You just can't put anyone on. That's a baseball field and that's a golf course. If you wanna see some disasters, those take specialized people. So the park board just passed, and she can attest to it, that we put the monies upfront to fix the main field because you see where the water would amass in the infield. They're coming, they're gonna reslope it, they're gonna cut the lip around the edges, and they're gonna put new side all around it. So, you know, that's something to just, Lily, when was the park board meeting?
Tuesday.
Tuesday. They just passed that. So you will see that being done.
Anybody else?
Christine Russell, precinct 26, committee woman. Piggybacking on what Linda just said, one of my questions and concerns was Block Stadium. And if there are gonna be renovations, I hope in the future that there are no more festivals out there. Not to say that we don't need festivals, but that's part of where the damage came into the field and everything. And also, my concern about festivals there is that that is a quiet zone area and we don't take that serious with the hospital being there and activities that have gone on there. I mean, there are no signs around the hospital, but I did one sign that says "Quiet Zone." And that was one of my things to bring up, that I hope the engineer would be able to meet with me. And I've tried to talk with the hospital, but they said I need to go through the city engineer. We need more signs there. Mayor, you know, you and I have worked in the past at Newark Councilman. We try to get the no parking around the hospital. It has just gotten ridiculous with the traffic that goes in and out of the emergency room. It is not fair to residents that live in that area. There are no parking signs in front of their houses, but they still park there. And I understand it's an emergency. The families wanna get into the hospital. But there are many cars that park there on a daily basis that are hospital staff. And they park on those streets. The ambulances can't even get through. This past winter, if you would've just sat there one day, it was ridiculous that ambulances couldn't even get down the street because you had cars on both sides of the streets. You had people that are ignorant drivers trying to get through to beat the ambulance, and the ambulance couldn't get to the hospital. And, you know, that might be your family that moved there one time. Also, with the tennis courts, the one tennis court that I was gonna bring up is the one closest to the pool area. I mean, with the beautification of Washington Park, I appreciate that. I've lived around Washington Park mostly all of my life. It's beautiful what you're doing to the band shell. We used to have a band shell there and it was an opportunity for kids to perform out there. And I applaud you for bringing that back to that park. But that one tennis court has all that garbage and rubbish in there. Can that be removed immediately so that the beautification that you are doing, it doesn't have an eyesore with those broken swings that are on that tennis court, the broken picking tables? If it's garbage, can you throw it away?
No, all of that stuff is being removed.
Okay.
And, and this is what I'm telling people, have patience.
Oh, I understand.
And some of these things are done in, in an orderly fashion. Like you're seeing the pavilions going up right now. Because then we have the specialty companies in it that's putting up the pavilions. And it was better for us to get the bang for our buck that they go from one park to another park to another park. Then you'll see the, the, the ones coming down to put the concrete. They'll come down and put the pad. So you see all that fencing that's going, that, that was around those courts. I guarantee you, when you come to the, we doing one of these meetings each month. By the time we get two months down the road and you come to that meeting, you gonna come and say, "Thank you, Mayor. It's a beautiful thing that you and your administration have done." But it's gonna take patience.
Right.
Before, it used to take money. We didn't have none of that. So no matter how much you would've complained, it couldn't get done. But now, we're moving in the right direction. Also, in, in the Sunny Side, I mean, and Todd, Kasushko, and Washington, we doing the pilot where we're putting exercise equipment out there. It's gonna be a nine-station exercise, station that you can go to and get physically fit. When we get to, you gonna have walking trail. You gonna have sculptural components. You gonna have when it rain, that you ain't gotta try to huddle up under a tree. You gonna have pavilions and shelters. You gonna have refurbished basketball courts. You gonna have, the water fountains gonna be fixed. But just like art, it's not one brush that, not one brush stroke, it's many of them until we see the entire picture. But I'm telling you, East Chicago- But I'm telling you, in Chicago, we're set. The only thing this city needs is political stability. We have financial accountability. Accountability, well, I can't remember, this city was $15 million in debt. We made the tough, hard decisions. We getting our money from the RDA. I told you for 10 years, the city of East Chicago been putting $3.5 million in the Regional Development Authority. I could have took that money down from day one, come on, Mayor. I got the money three years later, put a master plan together. And now, when they have to give us our 38 million back, I'm making that dollar hollow. And that's why you're starting to see infrastructure projects all over. We not just, we buying time, we doing re lining of the sewers to give us time. But you can't go nowhere in this city and don't be inconvenienced because you got to make another detour route because we're working on something. On Main Street, I beg the business people for patience because we're trying to go in there. When we do the infrastructure over, we're not going to have to touch it for another 50 years, if not 100. Because we're doing it right. We're doing it right. But I'm showing you, we went to go through Main Street. We were going to do all four blocks, $4.1 million. Now that project is $4.3 million. You know why? When we went, took the plans, and we went to get started, he started digging, and he thought he was getting ready to remove asphalt. He hit concrete. And he said, Mayor, you got concrete all up under here. They put the asphalt on top of the concrete. They didn't remove it and put a new base and come on top. So the price of the project went up. Then to add injury to the end zone, when he got to pulling out the concrete, he ran into railroad tracks. Where you had the old, the the trolley cars that used to go down in the middle. So then we had to pause. Instead of us being able to do four blocks and be done because we had accelerated that project because we didn't want the inconvenience to the business owners. They were going to literally do four blocks in seven months. But when we hit that speed bump, we had to slow down. Now we can only do two because now we have to tear the whole street up. Before, we was going to trench one side, and you will still be able to drive on the east side. But now since it was concrete up under, he said, man, I got to not only tear all the street out, I got to tear the sidewalks out, everything. But there's the blessing. What they say, delay does not mean deny. Our blessing came in. Now, that is wide open. He can do the project even better. And now we're going to complete that half of the project even quicker. But is that fast enough for the businesses who think that they may be affected? No, it may not be fast enough. But I guarantee you, we building a foundation for what's coming to the city of East Chicago. That's why we putting down our infrastructure. You're going to see the revitalization of that business district. So again, we ask for your patience, and every day. I hope you pray for us also. Because this is a Herculean task, to find the dollars, to infuse it, listening to you to see where to put it. And at the same time, like Chief Burbage said, when crime happening to you, them numbers don't mean nothing, even though crime has been the law since it's been in 20 years. But that number don't mean nothing if you feel unsafe where you at. You can see the billboard over there when they talk about the stop team. When this administration first came in, we was roughly doing 3,400, 500 stops a year. Now they up to 10,800 stops. You go from one side of the city to the other side, you're seeing blue lights. But we still need, when you see something that ain't right, call in. So I'm humbled that each and every one of you have come here tonight because we can do it better with your input.
Have one more.
Go ahead.
Mr. Burbage, when you were speaking, you made a comment that, well, first, thank you for the new officers. We really appreciate that they're all in the city. But you made the comment that it's going to take you working with the community and the community working with you. And we had an opportunity this last year, and there are some of us here in the audience that were a part of the First Police Academy. And we thank you for that. And we were given an opportunity through the police department to learn what a police officer actually does on a day-to-day basis. We were planning another one for this early spring, but it didn't go through. We are planning another one for the fall. We didn't have enough people sign up for it. But and there were some money issues. We're trying to become a 501(c)(3) so we can have more opportunities to offer more people in the community. So when you hear about it and they're signing for it, please take take a chance. It was an eight-week program. It was a great opportunity. We learned so much about the police department. We had hands-on opportunities that you never have had. So I thank you for that. So I just wanted to make a comment of the academy.
Christine, you see this arm behind my back? That's what Chief Becker did. He twisted. We found the funding for the class. And they're actively getting the next class together. We had a real good community meeting the other day where it seemed like we're going to have more volunteers. So the funding is there for the next class because the one thing I heard when we went to Ameristock for the first graduation class, I saw the growth and and the experience that each and every one of you had. So we have the funding for the class. Now we just doing the active registration board, and we're shooting for September.
I'd just like to say one thing. Christine, thanks for all your help in with the first class and with the second class coming up. One of the reasons we're having the Citizens Academy is so that you can physically come here and see that John Dillinger is not part of the building anymore, and he's not passing out money to all of us. There's not bags coming down of money. This isn't my father's police department anymore. We're trying to, the reason we did this is so that you could see that we're being transparent. There's nothing, there's nothing being hid here anymore. We're out in the open. We want you to be part of it so that you could better understand what it is. When you watch CSI on home, there's a murder committed, they solved it, they do all the paperwork. The guy gets convicted and goes to jail in one hour. Okay, that doesn't happen in real life. And and it gives you a better understanding of exactly what we face on a day-to-day basis and why we need your help. Like I said, we're 98. But if if we only, if we got half of the people to latch on, that's over 15,000 people. And I'll take care of the parking.
Let me say, clothing, what I would like to do, I would like all the department here to go back to their stations. Now you can get, ask an intimate question to them that you want. Personal problem that you may have it, that they can log it in, deal with that question first thing starting, first thing tomorrow. Again, just look around from roundabouts.
Excuse me.
Yes.
I need to talk about the problem on Main. We were talking a lot about the problems of the parks. I understand this is a big problem. But if there is no safety to begin with in the whole city, your parks and everything is going to go through the sewer along with the businesses in Main Street because we're not having any security or any circulation for this deal to go along. They said it was going to go from May to August. Now they're talking about it's going to go on to a cover for these two blocks. I don't know if the businesses in Main Street are going to survive this time. And it's not just the business. There's people that live in that street. And if there is no police, there is no patrolling, there is nothing. 140 in May is one of the worst spots in this Chicago. There is shots everywhere for whatever. I don't see the police going around. I'm there in a salon every day, and I'm sorry that I interrupt you. But yes, I know parts are informed. But the security of East Chicago, it is full. And the parks are beautiful. But if there is no police going around, people are not going to go to the park. And the business, do you want to bring businesses into the city? By what? Going to the, uh, somewhere the business are represented? Then when businesses come into the city, they're going to be like, okay, yes, I see business. There's spaces for business, but no business.
Okay, thank you. Let me simply tell you that that we're battling these issues. You're going to see the next business meeting coming up. If if you will come up, Jesse, it's coming up in a week. We have put task force together. If you go down there, you ask for additional signage, it's down there. Nippsco, ma'am, please, ma'am, please, both of, when I speak, please, please just allow me to listen because we are addressing your problem. Again, but when a person having a problem, you can't do it fast enough. But we are addressing the problem. Nippsco is coming down there, putting in additional light poles. You will see that next week. We have new and additional sign in there as we speak. They're having another meeting next week with the businesses. We have all graphic displays showing you all additional parking. So we have addressed the issue, and we're going to address the issue even more. We reduce it to a two-block project because we didn't want to, now knowing that we're finding the concrete and the rail lines. No one could have anticipated that. So we're doing the best that we can. We may not do it fast as you want, but we're doing the best that we can. We're doing the best that we can. We really are.
She has one minute.
The thing is, this now is done. It's open Main Street and all that stuff. You're talking about the signage, and that it took them three weeks to put signs, okay? I know we're having meetings already, and things have been worked. I understand that. Safety issue hasn't been worked one way I haven't seen it. Okay, now, hold on. Now, the other issue right there is, I don't know how engineers will get work. I'm a scientist. So it's different, right? But when I was so concerned in my chair, I asked them first, so I need to have on your hair. So I know what I'm doing against that hair. What am I going to be working with? The engineer, if he didn't know, if he didn't check the plans from the city, because I believe the city has plans, and in those plans, they would have been, there's some feeling, and there was a tolling. And if the city doesn't have plans, there's people that have been living here since probably the dinosaur era. So they know already, everybody that has moved to this street. So if the engineer didn't know about all of those things, they should have someone. So all that, as I said, it's been done already. But it's not, the city isn't working fast enough. And it's not just me. It's that more people, if someone comes and attacks us in that street, there is no one to run.
Well, what I can tell you that we didn't really admit the will. Projects like this get done, you run into bumps, you adjust and you adapt. Again, we can't do it fast enough for you. I realize that. But you know the irony of it all? When I first became mayor, the the businesses down there said they ain't had street improvements. Now we getting ready to dump $4.1 million down there. And now you're still telling us we can't do it fast enough. But I feel your pain. We're putting additional lighting down there. And when you say you don't see the police, man, we're patrolling that area more than ever. But what you're seeing now, you're seeing the policeman now actively going down Dildor and Pulaski. You're seeing them go through the alleys. So when you in your business, you don't see them going through the alley because now that's the path that you have to go to the businesses. So I have to defend the police department because they are out there aggressively. Our stop team is out there. They're they're out there on bicycles. They was just there last week knocking on the business doors. So, but I know that I know it's not enough. If we got 50, I know you would like to see 100. But we can't do it fast enough. I understand now. I I understand that we can't do it fast enough. But at this time, we're going to, at this time, we're going to go ahead and let everybody answer the questions individually because there's people here that want us to know their individual problem. And just like her, if we can't grab that problem and start dealing with it, then people going to continue to be upset. So at this time, at this time, okay? Okay, and again, thank you for coming.